We need a motion to sign.
Motion to sign move one.
All in favor?
Let's do it, swap the thumbs now.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of October 3rd as written. All in favor?
Do we need a motion for the minutes to approve on October 17th?
Are you making that motion?
I would like to do that.
Okay, well you do need one. All in favor? All right, old business, fire truck grant.
Just letting you know, we did complete it and it has been submitted.
Good, thank you. That's a big move.
Thanks to Bobby.
How much is it for?
Two hundred eighty-six thousand, that's the cost of the new truck.
Oh, and that's what we asked for?
Yep.
Great, great. How many people, how much is in the pool with the grant, do you know? How much money they have funding they have?
I don't know. I know they, they look at a lot of our applications as a national grant.
Oh, it's a federal grant. Well, good luck. Good luck for us. All right, we have, I'll give the petition. I want to know what it said, I'm gonna read the petition.
In old business, I wanted to just say, um, the public hearing is at 6:30 tonight in Machias Superior Courtroom on the sheriff's budget and that's why the meeting tonight was held.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, it was an ad hoc line.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, so, new business. How many, you have the total and how many signed? Ninety-six, but there were a couple that didn't get through. One, two, three, for ninety-three, you'd say?
Yep, ninety-three.
Uh, there was a petition circulated, uh, we the undersigned voters, the town of Lubec qualified to vote in all town affairs hereby request that you place the following request before the voters for the consideration at the following request at bi-monthly town meeting. Shall the selectmen of Lubec agree to request a committee, request a committee exploring to maximize full benefits to Lubec students, financial review, and regain local control for Lubec citizens? And there was ni- uh, ninety-three draft, qualified voters that signed, validated voters that signed. So that's, um, presented to us. I believe it's in regards to possibly having a different control over the school besides the AOS, that's my understanding.
I can speak on that if you want, the chair says.
Sonya, did you want to say anything?
Yes.
Why she said we did ninety-three citizens that's interested in a committee being formed. We'd like to form this committee to investigate the, um, AOS, um, the intentions of education benefit for the AOS, the cost factors, main reason for forming the AOS to begin with, research the state subsidies for calculation, research schools that have already opted out and asked them the advantages, disadvantages, and what happened. Schools in mid-name, most of them said that their directors were spread too thin. Well, when we first started, the AOS first started, I was involved in that, getting on that. And I believe there was, um, eleven or twelve schools. And the cost to us then wasn't that great. It was, um, I couldn't find my paperwork on it, but it was somewhere thirty thousand dollars or something like that. It was based on, it was based on the value of a town, now they're basing it on the head town. First thing that happened a couple years into it, Dallas backed out, they had the biggest piece of pie. And every time Dallas has dropped out, Rawdonson's dropped out, every time a school drops out, our piece gets paid. This year it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Well, you're supposed to have a superintendent out of it, uh, head of, uh, special ed, head of maintenance, head of, um, transportation. We never did get a transportation director out, we still don't have one. And, um, we just wanna see if it'd be more feasible at this point to, um, drop out of the AOS. And we have ninety-three signatures, people would like for us to research that and come back in, uh, late spring with what we've decided on it and what we're gonna do about it.
All right. Question? I do want, um, do we know how many people we'd like to have on this committee?
Um, five.
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 And then I had spoken to Wanda who, who I think said they have an alternate as well, is that way?
The name of the committee is gonna be the Lubec AOS Feasible Ad-Hoc Committee.
Well, that's what I need to know.
That's the name.
The Lubec AOS Feasible, oh, you got it right here.
You can have a speech paper, you have a list of everything.
Well, we, uh, we were on top of the people that wanted to sit on this, but we have to form the committee first. We need to make a motion to form a committee for the Lubec AOS feasibility ad hoc committee. Do I have a motion for that? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, now, we have some, we do need one select person to be the liaison, which we were gonna have, I think Dan volunteer for that?
I heard.
So, it's, uh, Dan Wagner, uh, motion to appoint Dan Wagner, Sonya Bailey, like Wanda, Wanda Matthews, Stephanie Teslow, and Ellen Case, and Barbara Siletto as the alternate. So if there's not five, then she could also vote. So that works really well.
I'd like to comment from MMA whether it's appropriate to have a sitting member of school board sitting on this committee.
Okay, that's a, that's a good comment. But we'll check on that.
Thank you.
And provided that's legally allowable by MMA, we will go ahead and appoint. If not, we will find another.
Another thing that we did check on was, um, there's no fine, they always, back when it first started, they threatened us for the fine, it was gonna give us a fifty thousand dollar fine if we didn't join the AOS. That never happened. And we've been, and Wanda did check for the state and there's no fines or nothing.
So like, which is no prepayment penalty, there's no fine for pulling out.
Yeah, I do wanna add that.
I assume that there is in fact a amount of time, like a, like in a contract for a grant, there's a certain, you have to give them notice. I'm sure there's notice.
Yes.
A certain amount of time.
Right now, it's just, we're just researching it.
Right.
Getting all our intentions, all the facts, advantages.
So it would be good if you left the, the amount of the notice and that would sort of give you a timeline of when you should come back to the town to let us know what your findings are. Cause it would be, you know, if you came back two weeks after this, you couldn't do anything. So.
I'm all, I'm for, but I'm wondering if we should make it a larger number, like seven, um, to get more peo- I think everybody should be offered the chance to be on this.
Yeah.
Not just the, the people that, you know, that are, your intentions are fine, but there might be other people out there that wanna be on this, so.
I haven't talked to a whole lot of people about it. I, you know, I haven't run around and talked.
I mean, certainly, we can do it once a, first meeting.
But I'm sure there'll be people step up once they realize what it's all about.
Once a meeting schedule, we can post it on the town website.
Yeah, you can have, you can have seven with an alternate.
Yeah.
Eight with an alternate, in other words?
Seven with an al- with one alternate. You could do seven with one alternate. Which would make the forum have to, the forum would be four then. But that would work if you'd have an alternate, that should be fine.
Right, and you have six.
We have five.
Five with a, and six with the alternate, you'd have seven and eight with the alternate.
Yes, yes. We have, we have to do that when we create a committee. So it could go, how about we create a committee up to seven with an alternate, with members up to seven with an alternate.
Yeah, and the ones that are already on there are fine.
Yeah. So we'll leave two spots open for somebody, or possibly three, depending on the legality of a school board member sitting on it.
Would you rather table this whole?
No, I think we should give it started, so that they can at least come up with a time and that way we can put it on pace before time it's gonna meet if anybody's.
Maybe if we set a hold on Stephanie.
And we'd like to have the meetings in the, in the.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna appoint Stephanie, um, subject to its approval. We can do, we can do her separate.
Yeah.
Or do a separate appointment.
Renee is, we'd like to have the meetings during the day, if we could, sometime during the day up here. Whenever it's open and available.
What do you have, any daytime meetings?
I think the same with stick of them.
Four.
Four, after four. Then you might wanna do like, the only thing doing the daytime, it's always been that it feels as though you're, you're not allowing some people to come, although I think everyone here on the, just being pointed could come then, but you might wanna make it at least, I don't know, four, but I don't know how to feel, I don't know about that. I don't want you to just, we don't wanna look like.
I think you're right about that. People work until five normally.
So you might wanna.
I think if you have it during the day or.
Yeah, you are leaving.
Well, I, I have things I do in the evening, which I've been wondering, I know she works, I don't know.
She works till five, I talked to her today.
Her schedule flips around, I don't know if she's a five on anything. I don't know about anybody else.
Well, why don't you just have a, a general meeting for the people that wanna be on and then open it up to the public, cause there's two other spots, and then amongst yourselves you'll have to decide, because it may be that everybody is available in the daytime. Do you wanna close, do you wanna come up with a time now, Sonya? For the first meeting?
Uh, yeah, sure. Got a calendar right there?
Okay, let's, let's, uh, let's make a motion to appoint Dan, Sonya, hold on, Wanda, and Ellen Case, they've always reached out there, and Barbara as an alternate. Uh, do I have a second?
I will say.
You motion?
Yes, all in favor? Okay, so now we're gonna make a motion that Stephanie be allowed to be appointed to this committee, provided that MMA ruling allows a school board member to also act as part of an ad hoc committee to, um, lead the AOS. And that'll be subject to that.
I'll call, I'll call. So you want us to do seven?
Yes.
If you wanna vote on that.
Subject to make the committee. We made a, I made a motion that we have this committee at seven, not two, seat seven with an alternate, with one alternate. Got a second? All in favor? Okay, thank you for joining us, Dan. I, I don't know if you are, but you're not really available in the daytime, are you?
I will, first of December, just about all the way through June. I mean, anything after, one o'clock, two o'clock, every time.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion for Stephanie. Stephanie's with, wants a motion that, that's subject to her ruling, of Stephanie's people.
Come on.
All in favor? And then sign off.
Tara, can we move number seven up? Marshall is here.
Yes, we can, absolutely. I don't know much about that, but while we're signing these, Renee can start the North Lubec Pump Station issue.
Okay.
No, I, I.
Okay.
So, uh, what do we do?
I think Ray's got the one to start, let her start.
Let me give a little bit of a introduction to it, background. Suzanne came across an agreement, uh, which we did not know about. Um, up north Lubec, across from where Marshall and Almeida live, is the parking lot to Rogers Island, that little pull-off just past Gerald Hall House. Um, years ago, actually in nineteen eighty-six, the town voted to help those three structures that were piping directly into the bay, the sewers.
So is it?
Yep, I got that meeting.
No, 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 this won't.
Um, the agreement is that the owners are billed by the town fifty dollars a year per property for the maintenance, and that there's no, no cost will come to the town for any of this, for the maintenance, for the electricity bill. Um, so, we didn't know about it and we need to go move forward. What is in your packet, the agreement's actually in your packet, and pictures of the panel. There's, I talked to Sheldon Santa yesterday, he's the one that installed it, and he gave me the full background of it. It is, you do have septic tanks individually.
Individually, each of the building, correct.
Near the, yeah, between your house and the road.
Correct, correct, correct.
And actually, they were really thorough and addressed, you know, the homeowners, you, you take care of all the piping, all your own septic tanks.
Your tanks, exactly.
And, um, what's in the parking lot are about twenty, whatever you call them, um, smaller tanks. It's, it's the bleach field, but it's not a leach field, because it's not leaching out. It's for the fluid, and there's a pump station, which is what the electricity is for, there's a pump in the pump station and it pumps up to these little catchers, I guess I'll call them, that's in the parking lot. So, the problem is, the panel needs to be replaced and it hasn't been functional for who knows how long. But it's dangling by a cord. And I talked to Conrad, he went and looked at it, and he said it can be replaced. Um, I guess, I just wanted to fill you in on all this, cause, just to let you know.
And I'll, yeah.
You should, yeah, you should be the one to arrange to have it fixed, I believe. I kinda think that's where we are today, is you guys, according to the agreement, the town.
From what I was, from what I was told from day one, early on, was that we were responsible to the tank, and from the tank and beyond, as far as plumbing, piping, across the road, whatever the case is, that was the town's responsibility for, for that type of maintenance.
I should give you this agreement, uh, we found it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, it's on four, on the next page. Should any malfunction or nuisance condition occur within the limits of the North Lubec Road right-of-way or any town property, it shall be the homeowner's responsibility to correct it as quickly as practical at no cost to the town. The homeowner shall make arrangements for all maintenance and/or repair of any defects. Payments shall be made to the town from this fund. So the fund is in.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Right.
It was this fund, Renee, was the money that they put in, put in a, separated, so that was monies to maintenance?
We have a fund, but it is in the negative, because no billing has been done since two thousand fifteen.
So no one's been paying into it?
Right.
And plus it was significantly reduced from one fifty to fifty and from five thousand to twenty-five hundred.
Right, once the fund reaches twenty-five hundred dollars, we're supposed to stop billing until it's used.
Did we? Is that what happened?
It's in the negative.
Yeah, what I used to do, and I think I.
We would pay the electricity bill out of it.
Right, yeah, exactly, in other words.
Which is about fifteen dollars a month.
Yeah, I was, I was paying a check once a year for a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty dollars.
Yep, for all three properties. You own all three, right?
Correct, we'd mail that, we'd mail that to the town once a year. Town would go, and I would mail it in. Now, however it happened.
Yeah, what happened in two thousand fifteen?
Well, no, no, listen, all I know is this, briefly, from what I know, when they replaced the poles, Van Gogh High Road came out and did all the, all the poles on the street, they told my wife that the line had been cut. Now, twofold here, uh, I'm gonna take the high road and be nice about everything here. There was only one individual in that neighborhood there that would have any malice towards me in cutting the line, so it didn't work. Now, twofold here, uh, I don't know when it was cut, Almeida was torn out by Van Gogh High Road, and I, and I was wor- I was working away for like the last ten years prior to retiring two years ago, so I hadn't really been around a lot in the last twelve years, other than on the weekend, okay? Uh, but again, I said, I, she said, the guy called, he was a boss, he said, yeah, somebody had cut that line, okay? So, again, uh.
So the whole thing, whole system is not working right now, correct?
Correct, now in other words, now I don't know.
How long?
I don't know that.
There hasn't been any charge, any usage for Van Gogh High.
When you say, five years?
Emira, they could only go back as far as two thousand and fifteen, and then there was no usage of the electricity, but they've been building now.
Now, I don't know, for whatever reason, when I stopped paying, just assuming, maybe the town started paying, I wasn't, I, I don't know why or how I stopped getting help.
I think the solution at this point would be to replace the panel and get it operational, and if the alarm goes off, then you know it needs to be pumped.
But if the pipe is cut.
Pipe? No, the line.
The line is cut.
The line will be electric though.
Yeah, yeah, in other words, yeah, the, coming down the poles, all well and good, but it looks like somebody did, okay?
There's pictures of the.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, no, it does.
Have you got pictures of it there?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, very cool. Yeah, so, yeah, the, the meter's sitting there, not spinning or running at all.
Right, it has.
The junction box underneath that, where the, where the, where the line came down into, it looks like somebody took off one of the covers, pulled the box down.
I think it's just from weather.
It could, yeah, that could be, but, but.
It's so old.
But.
Nineteen eighty-seven.
But the, but that line was cut. It wasn't, it wasn't.
It does look it.
It wasn't something that was tore out or ripped out, or somebody cut that line.
The second one down.
Yeah, yeah. It's the black, it's the black line, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah.
Correct, okay.
It is.
Yeah, so, so in other words, somebody at some point in time, now again, maybe the box did fall from underneath, maybe the screw, the bolt, rotted out of the, rotted out of the pole, and it fell back.
Underneath it's all gone, Conrad took a picture underneath it, and it's all rusted out.
Okay, alright.
And just so you guys know, there used to be three houses there that were all occupied.
Oh, yeah, in other words.
Now there's just one.
Right, in other words, yeah, so in other words, at one point in time, three units were using that leach field.
Yep.
Okay, so in other words, shortly, very shortly after we bought the property, I got rid of the, I got rid of the tenant there.
Right.
Very shortly. So the only one that's been using that, uh, that facility is one, you're right, one house, maybe.
And it's only part of the year.
Yeah, for the most part, no, we're staying home, we're staying home, this winter because they got projects to do, I've been up on Water Street, and I've got some things going on. We have a pet that's not doing well. So I think.
So we gotta figure out how we.
So Renee's saying this.
Quick question for everybody, if you know, Sheldon did it as I told you, cause I was told that, uh, do you wanna get who, somebody out there to do it and obviously pay for it, but I mean, uh.
I talked to Conrad, he's an electrician.
Oh, okay.
Conrad's here, I can give you his phone number, there's also another electrician in the area, Boris Beal, we have his contact as well, and.
And they're probably in the back of the paper there in the little, the little, uh, classified section.
Yeah, I could talk to him tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, if you give me a couple of numbers, I'll call them right away.
Okay.
I mean, you're not gonna get anybody.
No, no, no.
Today, or, but, I mean, I'll call them tomorrow morning, get an appointment, they will say pay.
The account Renee's talking about is in arrears seven hundred and forty-eight dollars.
In your packet, so. That page right there is going down, like sticks up from the bottom, because no last.
So if we had billed fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, we would've had at least six hundred dollars.
Would be, well, we'll pay one fifty, one sixty a year, so if.
Yeah, one fifty times four, six hundred.
Yeah.
Fifty, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
But, but here's the situation, there's been no power going to it, the meter.
But we've been billed for power.
Yeah.
I see your point.
Yeah, in other words, that meter, the meterhead.
There was meter, power to the meter.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, in other words, the line comes right down too.
It's a wire, it's just, it's been caught.
It's a mirror's line.
But when did you know about it?
That's always.
When they put the new poles in.
When was that?
I was told, when the, the new poles on the Lubec River.
But I don't know when would it.
Well, have you by, with procedures?
Most, yeah.
Yeah, I, I figure that's by procedures.
So five and six years ago, you knew that it was cut?
He told me, it was probably somebody cut.
So why? Why would you not wanna be interested in having it work properly, since you own the property?
Well, I was, but, but being, being very busy, being out of town for like five days a week, being away, long hours, one thing led to another, and it just got lost in the shuffle.
Believe me, I know how it is.
Yeah, so I mean, again, it's not, you know, it isn't a case of, well, like I didn't wanna pay for it and fix it, I mean, uh.
Yeah, there's coffee in the last room.
That's why, yeah, that's why we're here, you know, that's why we're discussing it now.
Right.
I have no problem paying the arrears, I have no problem paying to have it fixed, getting it working properly, uh, you know.
Well, now it's like getting out in good faith, you were busy and it just happened.
Yeah, but the other thing is, and again, I go back, I go back to somebody cutting that line.
Yeah, that, that is something between.
And again, and, and let's put it this way, okay? I'm gonna take the high road and be a nice guy, there was only one person in that neighborhood that had malice towards me, you know, threatened me many times, I heard from several people, yeah, he says he's gonna, I mean, all kinds of BS, okay? Now, I don't know this for a fact, but if I had to bet money, that's the person that cut the line.
And, and a lot of the people. Sheriff's Department for.
Now, another option that is, is in the agreement is that if the homeowner doesn't pay.
You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna put me against a wall, shouldn't you?
No, this is another option that you have, we can assess a special tax on their tax bill.
Oh, no.
What you wanna?
In other words, yeah, I'll pay, I mean, we'll get it, we'll get it fixed, we'll get it, we'll get it going.
All right.
And again, it's just a case of getting busy, being busy, working, you know, I worked in Augusta, I was, I worked sixty hours a week, I was home, a lot of times I didn't get home Friday night, I'd go home Saturday morning, Sunday.
Home one day, a package.
It was though. I didn't say six hundred.
One day cooked for you.
Let me ask, let me ask the town a question.
We could do a payment thing.
Well, oh, no, I, I, when, I, if you wanted to call a guy and come out.
Mr. Ross was agreeing to pay the arrears to get it fixed, I think that sounds fantastic, what do you think?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Let, let's just start right there.
Now you got, what a guy he is, now, what a guy.
Yeah, I think in that.
I mean, we.
We're gonna go while we're ahead.
We're gonna move on.
Yes, I think, that sounds perfect.
Yeah, we'll do that, but, but probably I'd be wise to contact the electrician.
Yeah.
Whomever you think would be, did Sheldon recommend anybody for that, for doing that job?
I asked him, does it need an electrician or plumber? And he said, electrician.
My first, yeah, yeah. Cause that's what I said, you remember I said that to you?
Yeah.
You know, if you come down, I'll show you what, what's going on here, and that, you know, the first step's an electrician. Uh, so like I said, I will take care of that, hey, you're yours.
I got it right here.
So, uh, we appreciate you coming to the meeting.
Oh, listen, you know what?
I know it was short notice.
No, this, listen, you know what? Life is short.
You're here now, right? Are you, are we retired now?
Yeah, I'm retired, and I don't think I'm leaving town for the winter, and I don't.
Oh, good. Another soul here in the winter.
Another lonely soul.
Well, you can help the shovel.
I need the exercise, I need the exercise.
I'm forgetting my shovel.
He will, he got a shovel in shorts.
When life's on, I can get to put it in.
Come down to Gallagher for a dance or two this winter.
Yeah.
We should.
Yeah, we should, yeah, cause I mean, again, and we, and we have a pet that's not the one.
This is the guy that already looked at.
Alright, okay, so I, I'll probably contact him first, see what he can get, when I do, I will let you guys know, look, he's only three days a week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mark, very much.
No, no, uh, what's the, what's the balance of the dough that I owe you guys? And you got to come out?
Seven forty-eight eighty-seven.
Yep.
Seven, I mean, I'm gonna have to get a job, a job, uh-oh, a real job. Seven forty-eight eighty-seven?
Yes.
Okay, uh, town of Lubec.
Yes.
Thanks, man. Well, listen, you know, I don't wanna get lined up and shot here.
No.
Here, here. Well, make sure.
Right there.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Almeida and Marshall.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, I appreciate you. Yeah, and like I say, what happened, basically life.
Yeah, well, now we're fixing it now, so that's what worries us. Passes over.
Matter of fact, when I get home, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call Conrad, I'll call him to see, see if I can get him.
You might get him now.
See you, Carl. We'll get that answer, yeah. I might go in there.
All right, moving on, we have a tax abatement.
I'm gonna ask the mayor, we have a town mayor?
We'll make one for you.
Listen, you know what? I was the mayor of Winter Harbor, you use.
You'll make, we'll make.
I'm going in tomorrow, uh, Friday.
We used, we used to have a mayor in North Lubec, so you can.
That's right, Mayor of North Lubec.
That's funny, definitely. Thank, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for handling that expeditions, we appreciate that.
Happy retiring.
Yeah, listen.
Serving days on our strawberry turkey, someone I need to be done, I got four now.
You can give them money, I guess, I guess.
I don't know about anybody else, well, resigning, I have my days, believe me. No, 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 my, my wife not even taking into account, I liked my job, I enjoyed it, what do I miss? I missed the routine, the structure, and the regimentation, that's what I miss. And you know what? I don't know how most people are, retired, no good.
No.
Oh, oh, yeah, you told me that, I saw the article, I thought maybe you were retired or good.
Well, he is that, he that day.
Yeah, yeah, you missed a job, don't you, time of your tone.
Thank you.
Put a switch on the gang on.
We need a six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, fifty-seven cent abatement on real estate account ten sixty-nine. This is the abatement we, we agreed to give.
Thank you.
Uh, Irving's for giving us the property use.
Yeah.
So we need a motion on that.
Motion for the abatement for the.
Irving. It's fine, it's public now.
Account one zero six nine map zero one five dash two six zero. I will second it.
All in favor?
Keeping it professional here.
I know, but in this case, the town needs to know why we're giving them money, because it's public.
Because we're all getting six cents off a gallon, probably.
Yeah, I'm right.
Alright, now, third of the tenant, NG supplier offers, Renee's got some information on saving hopefully some money on our electric bills. It's a supplier that's offered to give us a little, it's a contract for a alleged lower rate, I don't.
It's a forty-eight month contract, and the rate is substantially lower than the mayor's at the time, at, right now.
But the mayor's changes theirs every, annually, so you're locking it in for four years.
Right. And this locks in for forty-eight months. What we have to figure out.
It never goes down, it doesn't.
We have to remember to look at it when the forty-eight months are up, because they'll likely.
Just bought it back from anyone.
Right, so.
So put that in your phone.
Yep, and I contacted all my county, other county manager friends to see what, if they ever do this, and that was their caution, is that, no, they usually go with the mayor, and, and that's why. Because they, they usually, right, but.
I make a motion, you don't forget.
Okay.
Yeah, so you wanna go with that contract, guys?
There is some pending changes, um, I've emailed them today, the contract is written for, to start on December first, twenty nineteen. So I've emailed them, that, that's an error, uh, wanted to start eighteen.
Okay.
Um, so if you make your motion pending the changes, uh, then I will.
Okay.
Sign the contract, motion for me to sign the contract.
On the contract with the pending changes?
Yes.
Second.
What is the name of the act?
Who motion? N G E N G I E.
It's called a type four building.
No, that's correct.
Carol, motion here, and.
Jason.
Jason.
Carol, seconded, Jason, intent to build.
Okay, oh, here's Gary's, uh, moving ahead, thank you very much for doing that research. Our code enforcement officer has submitted a thorough report.
I think that's very, very good.
Very excited about it.
Happy to thank you so much.
Do we have any questions on, he is present, if you have any questions?
No, I think that's very nice.
Do you have anything that you would like to share with us, that particular item that you wanna point out that's been particularly successful?
The one on Jackie, no name, uh, fourteen down.
Mm-hmm.
Guy was the person today, they have the letter from the USDA at her house, she's gonna bring us a copy of it. She has to take it to the courthouse to get the deed released into her name, so she can do whatever she wants to do with it. She's still wanting to give it to the town, but we're still holding off.
Well, you can, can he give addresses out, just not names, I mean, what, what property are you talking about?
Eight Cumberland.
Eight Cumberland Lane.
Eight Cumberland Lane?
Oh.
One with the front of it falling off.
Oh.
Down, it looks like Washington Street.
Oh, it's Washington.
Oh, yeah, in between the two, the whole.
Yeah, yep.
Oh, okay, was that, okay?
No, no.
Further down, towards the bridge.
Like, two houses up from the, before.
Oh, I know, on the corner there?
Yeah, two up this way.
Like, two up from the blue house, on the corner. It's, it's like gutter and everything, it's like, dang.
Oh, okay.
Well, very good, looks like you've been hard at work.
And the other one, uh, number thirteen, I went back out there, been three months, nothing has been done, so I'll have to. It was, uh, order appeal, see what we can do about it.
What address is that?
Uh, Dodgery, eleven Dodgery Lane.
Four.
Dodgery Lane. I, I went out there today to check, and nothing done, still falling down, doors are off of it, neighbors are complaining, so. And she's not the likely good person to talk to on the phone.
So you think you're just gonna move to an appeals court, we have, uh, this procedure that you've been studying, right?
Yeah, and I gotta give the board a appeal, and then we'll have to.
Planning board.
Set it up, and then go on there.
Zoning board, we don't have a zoning board, a planning board, go to the planning board.
Yeah, planning.
Okay.
How, you make out on number sixteen, how's that going?
Um, we've got, with USDA comes down, EPA come down, we had a discussion, seeing what's going on with it, and. We would like to recommend that the town accept what I've talked to you about, and Jim Clark on having three different permits for his, one to intent to build, one for a building permit, so we know they're actually doing something, that it's time to start, and, and if they wanna tear down, have one that states on the top to, to demo, tear down the permit. So Jim Clark and the town will know that if they're tearing the building down, it will go to him, so he can change the assessment on the property. There's no building on it now, it's just the ground.
You, you have to notify the town, I agree with the permit, like we spoke about.
And that way we know what's going on out here in that forty, when it's coming around, what's the plan on doing.
You can't, Carol, you can't burn anything anyway, you can't burn things, you can't burn anything.
Right here, it's a law, it's a law. Uh, and with EPA, they sent me some stuff, and, and I had to get a copy of it, and take it to the guy that did this last burn, and there's stuff in there that you have to abide by, you have to be inspected by state inspection before you tear down, to make sure there's no dead paint.
And what did he say, the person that did the burning, did you contact them?
Yeah.
And what did they say, what was their answer?
He, he thought he was doing right from what he was told from years ago, well, now he knows he's, he did, and he's got all the new information that comes from the EPA. I just took it out today and dropped it off there, and she sent it to my email, and I took it to him. He is abiding by the rules now on the cleanup, attempting to clean up. And you get somebody acting, back there in the back forty, they can do the same thing, we won't know nothing about it. We need to have it ordinance with the town, have it voted in, that if you wanna tear down, you need to come and get a permit, and it will state on you what, how you can go about tearing this building down, but we won't have this problem here.
And speaking to Gary.
Well, if it's an ordinance, we need a town meeting.
Correct, but speaking to Gary, he's on the right track, because, you know, you gotta have certification where it goes, and, and it covers the town, and. He's done a lot of homework on it, he's done a great job on it.
Do we have any, any ordinance at all that controls the demolition of a building and tear down?
The state does, yeah.
But there may be also, there's an opportunity here in the town as well, for a discussion on ordinance in terms of permits of new construction.
Yes.
Um, and like I said, you know, don't anyone freak out, it doesn't need to be a lot, I think more in a little town like this, it would be needed for awareness. So if, if there is a permit required, if you're gonna throw in a, a small addition under your home, permit required, if you're gonna build a structure, you want some property, destruck.
It's building code, we don't have one right now, but you, the town can abide by the state.
Right, which is.
We can incorporate the building code to the state, but then you've got a whole, whole other job, like, right, Joanne, you've got, then you have to hire somebody and pay them to oversee all of this, so, you know.
You don't wanna get into that.
You don't, no, I'm saying we don't wanna get into that.
But what Gary's, what Gary's brought up is, and what Dan's talking about is.
Is just.
We come in, you pay your twenty dollars.
I, I just disagree all the way around, so.
You gotta notify the town if you're gonna tear something down.
Okay.
I, I think if you're getting into ordinances, and you're getting into all that stuff.
No, I don't wanna do that.
You're gonna have more dilapidated buildings laying around.
But you can't burn them, you just can't.
Well, I, I, I.
I mean.
I disagree with that, I think that there's ways that you can. I mean, the fire department would not give out permits if they didn't think that they were, that building was not, he went through that building, I mean, pit, things were sta, uh. He, I, I wondered why the couch was sitting on the side of the road, I said, why isn't he burning the couch?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I would've bought, I would've burnt it, you know?
This is what a fire pack has to do with people burning.
Well, why did he give them a permit?
He gave it to clean wood.
He, he stated on that permit, he was burning clean wood on.
What he does after the.
Once we did, we went down, we watched, he was doing clean wood on it, town hall closed up, got dark, what went on fire.
After dark, he, he put stuff on.
What goes on?
I, I didn't know that, but I, I mean, I just really think that if, you know, when I went by, the guy was picking through it. He took the windows out of it, he took all the stuff out of it.
I saw that it was all suffering, everything was a whole pile that couldn't be burned, and he was just burning wood, but that was in the daytime, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And the N D P is investigating, and it's in their hands.
Yeah.
Really, it's all.
I know, he said he had to go to Augusta or something, I don't know, but anyway.
I mean, going forward, it would be nice if people just knew the rules, so that they didn't have to backtrack on stuff that they didn't know they were supposed to do in the first place.
And, and if we get something up, like on the, the intensive bill, like, me and Jason's got on the paperwork, but a guy that comes from D E P.
Mm-hmm.
They got rules, they know what they gotta do and what they can't do, they can, we can give them a form, they can look at it, okay, I gotta take the shingles and put them over here, I can't burn them, like, it's gotta go to this landfill. This has gotta go there, it's gotta be inspected and signed off by a fire marshal, well, the fire chief, okay, yeah, you can burn this, you can't do whatever. There's steps in that form, that they gotta go through to tear that house down. Right now, we don't have that, and you can do what you want, well, the whole town is pretty much out of trouble over the last weekend.
There's only one hauler that can haul asbestos in this area, and it's, oh, he's up in Denny'sville. He's the only guy in the area that can haul asbestos.
A trash hauler?
Nope, nope, you can't.
What's demolition, considered demolition, right?
No, asbestos is not, you have to have it in.
Hazmat, hazmat.
It's a special waste, it's a hazmat.
Oh, hazmat, okay.
Yes, you have to have it close to.
A planning board already has permits, but additions to properties, or if you're building or rebuilding, you have to go through the planning board to get your permit.
Oh.
But you also have to.
In the shoreline.
Look around, drive around town to see what's going on, because people just do things.
There's only the shoreline something, that's the planning board.
Well, that's correct, anything within two hundred and fifty feet, you're high tide.
Miles and miles of.
My understanding is you have to, before you tear a house down, you have to notify the town.
Right.
Last, last year, the house on Main Street was torn down, and they had to notify the town before, and Jim Clark went down and did a walk around, and looked it all over before it was torn down. And that's kinda what Gary's saying, saying things, you know, come in and say, look, I'm gonna make this property disappear, include him in it, so he can take a look at it, see if anything sticks out.
Was there, um, a requirement that the taxes were paid up before it was torn down?
That I don't know.
That is part of it.
That, that's part of it, that's a good, I, I think that's a good rule, that if you're gonna take something off the tax rolls, like, just, you know, destroying it, carting it away, burning it.
That, shingles and asbestos were the three things, that taxes had to be paid, no shingles, and no asbestos, and that was a good start. And that goes before the planning board with permits.
So did that, did that particular case do that?
That's more than the planning board.
Did that, did that house that was burnt last week come before the planning board?
I don't know, I'm not on the.
Or, well.
Sign from the planning.
Did it? So they, well, they would've had to have a meeting, and they're having a meeting right now, actually, they're, aren't they after having a meeting?
Yep.
You just somebody wanna ask? What?
Well, I leave here, yeah.
You're going now? Okay.
But as far as I know.
So we find out from them, what did the.
As far as I know, he didn't know, I didn't know he even bought the house, but he told, started tearing it down, but already.
It's on the honor of the homeowner, doing it the right way.
And, I mean, I don't, he should've come up and asked.
Yes, I'd say so. Well, okay, so the conclusion of this discussion is, going forward, if you are intending to tear down.
Gary, Gary needs to be notified.
Mm-hmm. You get this, uh, code enforcement officer needs to be notified, he will direct me to the proper, the proper way of doing it. So if everything goes through Gary. And your hours, you have hours up here.
Well, an ordinance, yes, but I can.
No, I'm saying what the ordinance already is existing, because you can't, you guys can't overstep an ordinance, how it's already written. I don't know that it's.
Then we don't have an ordinance.
We have the, the building intent, it's an, there is an intent to build.
Well, Gary will, he's the other one.
But is there an intent?
No.
Tear down?
No.
No.
You're not gonna get asked.
It's regulated by the state, we can't be less restrictive on.
What you can control is the fire department, and I think this is what Joanne's remembering, is making sure the taxes are paid. That's when your fire department is asked to burn down a building, then you control the fire department, and you can say, your fire department can't burn that building until you know taxes.
Unless the tax is a thing.
But that's not in the ordinance.
Right, but what Gary just said, you can't, you've gotta have it, what, somebody gotta, somebody come in and inspect it before you burn it, correct?
We don't have those things.
No, no, state.
Right.
It has to be state personnel.
State has to come in and check it all out before you.
So the state may have an ordinance, but we don't.
State must have one, absolutely.
We have, ours is a town.
But we have, oh, okay.
We have to, yeah, we have to follow state law, the only thing we can do is make it more restrictive, not less restrictive, so we're supposed to be following state law.
But what I'm suggesting is just, if you're gonna tear out now, come and see Gary.
I agree with you, and then Gary will tell you.
I agree with that.
Correct, Gary's very knowledgeable.
Everything should go through Gary, our code enforcement officer, and maybe we'll put a little notice on our website, that if you're intending to build or intending to tear down, please, please seek advice from the code enforcement officer first.
Exactly.
To get the proper paperwork filed.
Tuesday, eight to twelve, Thursday, twelve to three.
Eight, okay, Tuesday, eight to twelve, Thursday, twelve to three. You will find our code enforcement officer here, present at the town office, thank you very much for those hours, appreciate it.
Gary, can we get more out of you?
He's got enough jobs now.
He's got two or three more jobs.
Only if he can go there.
He's got three, three time clocks.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary, for everything.
Alrighty, I'll go to the other meeting.
Oh. Delivery of a watch and notice, and we're just gonna work. General and Mercran, the watch and notice, watch and clerks, our Sonia Bailey and Stephanie Teswell, and Debbie Holmes and Ann Sealy. The town clerk is Renee Gray, our registrar, voters is Suzette Francis, our warden is Sherry Pike, we have to appoint her, correct, or has she's already been appointed?
No.
Take the motion, uh, appoint Sherry Pike as a warden.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'd like to remind the public that absentee ballots are available now and will end November first. And that the election is November sixth, eight to eight.
Eight. A week from today.
Yes.
Come out and vote.
Get this over with.
Geez, I know, it certainly is, all the news wants to talk about.
Propaganda, oh my lord.
That appointment is for two years, by the way, for.
Five.
For sure.
Good seven.
Land and conservation open space panel. Renee was so nice to volunteer to sit on.
No, I was asked by Judy.
She was actually relegated to sit on panel, on panel November second, to represent our interest in land and, lands and conservation and open space. And she has been working, I know for a fact with Jim Clark, on the updated figures of how much the taxes have been taken off. Her itemized each land trust and what their break is.
Open space.
And what the difference would be in the mill rate if they were paying full price as opposed to what we pay now.
I like that.
And she's going with that, um, information to the panel, and of course, if we, any of us have any views on going forward with land trusts, I think this would be a really good time to share that with Renee.
I have framing questions that was emailed that I'm supposed to be prepared to answer.
Oh, good.
And so, I'll, I'll read these.
Okay, let's see this.
Okay, the economic study is meant to be a tool for communities, land trusts, regional planners, and economic development, focused by offering information and methods for strategically assessing new conservation projects and leveraging existing conserved land for economic benefits. How do you plan to use it? And how can D C N, which is Down East Conservation Network, help to maximize its usefulness? So, this is the economic study, how do we plan to use their economic study?
Does, did they get a grant to do it?
No. Who, who is Down East Conservation Network?
That's a good question. Who's a part, Judy used as part of, I think it's a collection of people, like Dr. Renee on this panel, that just.
Is it a subsidiary of, um, of Washington County?
Anybody have a phone that look it up, what it is?
Oh, it's probably. I have a whole fifty-eight pages, I think, which is the study.
Is it just being formed now is the question, is it state-run? I think Joanne must know, is it from the, from the state?
I, I've never heard of it.
I haven't either.
So, I'm wondering if it's.
Agree. Where, where'd it come from?
It created.
You have the fifty-eight pages?
Yeah.
So, it's Down East Conservation Network?
Go to the next question, I'll, I'll.
It has a report, actually, the second question. The economic study found, okay, so this has already been done. The economic study found large differences in benefits accruing from conserved lands in different parts of the study area, especially between the Acadia and non-Acadia parts of the region. What does that insight mean to you? How could or should the non-Acadian areas that have large swaths of conserved land benefit more than they do now?
By them paying up?
By them paying their taxes. That's a, that's a no brainer, right there.
Either that or do what Acadia does, we'll put up a toll booth and charge twenty-five dollars a car.
That's right.
That's what they do, go on the surf road, cost you like twenty-five bucks.
So, by having their.
Right there, right on our corner.
Their share, more percentage.
Yeah. Well, I mean. I, I think it's a stupid question myself. Sorry you ever asked it or I'm over it, but.
Okay, the Down East Conservation Network, stuck here on page three. D C N is a coalition of organizations and agencies that connects conservation, research, education, and people in Down East Maine. So.
It actually could be something.
Find who the members are, all of these, it's just a bunch of, I'm gonna see, they should be listed.
Okay.
Could one of the other situations be, is if the benefit of open land use is the visitation and tourism and hiking and health and use of it, if that is a state and national benefit, maybe there's something the state can do to alleviate some of the burden on the town.
Steve Crass, the senior, came to Augusta and brought that up, and it wasn't met with.
Well, no, and, and, and I would understand that, but I mean, and, and believe me, I am very, I'm like, buy up every acre you can and protect it, I'm personally. But I also understand the burden on the tax base, whereas you're putting the burden on thirteen hundred people exactly.
We have.
When meanwhile, if, you know, even the two nation vacation says three million people are gonna come visit.
Yeah, right.
You know, imagine if we got twenty-five, not twenty-five dollars a car, maybe we got twenty-five cents, I mean, that, that'd pay our taxes. I mean, it's, it's just, there has to be a, and I know it's something that Augusta just, they know it exists, they know it's a problem, they just don't wanna touch it.
No, they want their money.
Um, so, it, it, it's, it's not gonna, it's gotta get resolved there in Augusta, and, and they're not gonna, I don't think, address it until enough people. And, you know, will would be a start.
It's, it's never gonna get resolved because it's, this area is too small. You talk about the way you'd vote, I mean, we're all voted.
I was talking to Jim, trying, they want solutions to find a happy medium. What about a solution of, you know, we've got forty-two parcels in open space protected, that's two thousand seven hundred seventy-nine acres. All, all but eleven are in shorefront, which, Jim said, that's our prime property.
Yeah.
And it's in shorefront. We're losing a hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars a six.
Which means, which means that you can't, you can't, you can't buy a thousand feet of frontage along the ocean because it's protected. So, there's no opportunity for someone to come in and build a house and pay a lot of taxes.
What if they, like, you say, cap, cap this and don't allow anymore to go into conserve until the town reaches development, you know? Until it catches up.
There should be a percentage, you know, once a percentage, and that's it.
Stop the bleeding.
I agree with you, Renee.
Or if nothing else, increase, work out some sort of agreement over a ten-year timeframe where at least the Down East and all these organizations can pony up. They got a lot of money because they're buying all this up, so instead of paying three percent, whatever it is, I'm just making up a number, maybe next year's four percent, and the year after that, and there's gotta be some sort of scale which would not involve anything coming out of Augusta's pocket, but coming out of these organizations. And not being harmful to them, you're not asking to turn it over tomorrow and you have to pay half.
One of Jim's solutions was to level the playing field. Right now, you've got some properties being taxed at thirty percent, some at fifty, the majority is taxed at five percent. And so, he says, level the playing field, if they're gonna be here, have them all pay fifty percent. If, if they were to pay fifty percent.
I'd be happy to pay fifty percent.
Could, could we, could we all do that?
The mill rate, this year's mill rate, if they were paying fifty percent, this year's mill rate would be twenty-two point four zero. It's not a huge difference, but when you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here, it does make a difference. So, the person that's on a seven hundred dollar a month income from social security.
It's a hundred dollars per tech, a hundred and twenty dollars per tech, per property.
Basically, what happens is people are coming in, buying all this property, and they're putting the burden on the poor people that live here.
If they were being charged a hundred percent, this year's mill rate would be twenty-one point seven nine.
Which is a savings of, if you are, if you own a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, it's a savings of about a hundred and twenty dollars per a hundred thousand. So, if your house is only worth seventy-nine, then you're saving maybe eighty, eighty dollars. But it's per property, if you want to pay a lot, like every bill you get is taxed.
There's two more questions on the frame, I'd like to get through them.
Well, I think, can't we cap it off on a percentage, like if, like if we own a million acres and they've already bought two hundred thousand, then that means they've already bought twenty percent of our land. Is there any way we can cap it as, hey, your land trust can only buy fifteen percent of every, of our property and then you're done? I don't know if that's legal.
I'm telling you, I've seen, and I've seen some people leave here.
What, it's not?
Because they can't afford it.
That's, well, you know, it sounds too good, right?
I mean, how many families have you seen leave?
So, what is, what is the, what is the basis of the different, hey, thirty percent, fifty percent, and five percent?
Uh, they're classed, open space.
Are we allowed to do that? Are we allowed to change, do that, make everybody pay fifty percent? That doesn't sound right, you know, I don't think we can do that. But that's what Jim thinks we should do.
All right, what is it, all right, so forty-two parcels, what about tree growth?
That is the next question, the scope of the study was necessarily limited, so many benefits and costs of land conservation were not accounted for. What would your priorities be for future economic studies? One potential topic is the impacts of land conservation and the tree growth tax credit on municipal tax rolls. Would that be a priority for you, why or why not?
Yeah.
We're getting eleven thousand dollars this year for tree growth, we got ten thousand last year and nine before that. That sounds great, but I just believe more properties are going into tree growth, that's why the money's going up, not that the more funding is coming.
We're good, yeah.
I mean, at least when they're in tree growth, they've got to do something with the property, they're mandated to cut it or manage it.
That is true, Jim, that is true.
You know, they can't just.
You have to work it, you have to have a.
That's not entirely true. What has to happen is that you have to have a forester's plan in place.
Exactly.
And the forester's plan might say, do nothing. They can't, I got this from Jim Clark. So, if the forester's report says do nothing, and you do nothing, you're in full compliance with the law.
But the other part of tree growth is you're not allowed to build, construct, separate, divide, sell.
In tree growth.
In tree growth, so there's a.
It's another conversation.
There's a catch, it is, but it's a, it's a catch twenty-two.
Yeah. And if you take it out.
Yeah, then it's a penalty, penalty.
And if you take it out, and if you take it out, the penalty is it pro rates back to when it went into tree growth, even though that's, even though if you bought the property five years ago, it's been in tree growth for twenty-five years, right? You gotta go back to twenty-five years. So, you can't, you can't build a cabin, you can't build a shed, you can't sell a couple acres to your kids, you can't do any of that. So, there's a, the, the issue, I think, right now for the town would be, is there a moratorium or anything we can put on land conservation or anything, just so we can get a handle on?
That's a question for, for.
Right, yeah, correct. But I agree with you, Dan, because we're, we're struggling. Everybody, we're patchy.
Well, your, your question was how, how can there be more study, what kind of studies do you, they want done that will help the situation? I think there's only so much academic studies can do to help, you really need to be hands-on and talk to the people. They need to, they need to hold the actual impact of the citizens that live here. What they're doing is they're elevating this to an academic level, which is just not grassroots. You need to go door-to-door and say, how is this impacting the people of Lubec and Washington County? Because they are moving away and they need a voice.
And eighty percent of the people do not understand that.
No, they don't understand why their taxes are going up.
Is there a proportion of any rate that the state's responsible for in respect to Down East buys a hundred acres outside of Portland, and that affects their tax base, but yet the probably average home income is, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, let's say. And they buy a hundred acres here in Lubec, and the average income is, you know, twenty-seven thousand dollars.
There needs to be a formula that.
There needs to be a formula and a scale that.
That's based on the median income, I like that, I like where you're going with that, because that, but I also think that you need feedback from the people. They don't understand why they're having to move away, and they're looking at like park after park, and as nice as parks are.
Well, I, I will be fair, I've had to move out of a town, it had nothing to do with land conservation or anything like that, it just had to do with the fact that schools and roads and everything else became more and more expensive. So, land is just, and, and environmentally speaking, it's just, it's just another piece to the list. I think what also people understand is unfortunately, there, there's no guarantee, just because you live here, that you're guaranteed to live here your whole life. And I say that just from experience, and that I've had to move twice, and one time was because of the taxes, it just became too much for me.
That's what's gonna happen here.
That is, that is happening.
You know, unfortunately, that's part of the world we live in, but when it's unfair, which is why I'm looking at, and I think it was brought up, that again, the, the, the impact of, you know, even something as simple as Hancock County as opposed to Washington County is, is tangible when it comes to, you know, any sort of thing coming off the tax base and going back to the tax pay.
I'd like to see accountability of, you know, in lieu of taxes, all these land trusts.
No, but that's, but that's been looked at, I mean, they can sit there and say, they advertise, they advertise in national magazines, they keep the trails cut, they put all these brochures, I mean, that, that can get argued to the cows come home, and unfortunately, is not a, I don't think, a tangible discussion. I think it really needs to be some sort of proportion, proportional, uh.
Joanne?
I, I don't know what, I, I, I'm just, you know, New Hampshire, it was, even New Hampshire, Vermont capped their residence taxes. That's how they handle a lot of it. If you, right, if you had to, had remained in that yard house for a certain amount of time, you were grant filed at that tax. Your tax did not go up no matter what.
So, the rest of the people that didn't, weren't eligible.
It can only go up to twenty percent.
Right, now, I'm, I'm pretty sure it was New Hampshire.
My mother, my, and I won't mention the town, but my mother's town, my mother's town, did think if you lived a certain amount of time in the town, you then went to a half tax.
Is that what you're saying, Jason? Yeah.
And then, and then at another certain point, where basically the town had voted, and this was years before my mother was eligible for it, was, look, if you've been in this town for fifty years, been paying, enough's enough. And so, she actually spent probably the last six, seven years of her life, she didn't pay tax. And it wasn't, it wasn't retro, it didn't become part of your estate that you had to pay back. It was just, uh, uh, an equation was put in place. Now, what if that meant, you know, it went to a few more dollars to the new person who moved in? Well, then that's fine, because they know what they're getting. But for someone who's been here for seventy-five years to still be expecting them to pay full boat, I think in a rational discussion would be silly.
I think that's an option to write down as a, as a.
That's an issue, that's a.
And I'm sure there are towns that do it, and I can, I can look into the one that she was from.
The big concern I have, and really opened my eyes, being on the budget thing, I mean, crazy. Everything's going up. Everything's going up. Your, your insurance is going up, school cost is going up, everything's going up. If we don't get a handle on this, then, you know, the taxes are just gonna keep going up here, and it's gonna force the poor people out of here.
Well, you're talking a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars a year.
That's a lot of money.
That's big for this.
For forty-two parcels of the land. I mean, it's just.
I want to ask him, somebody on a fixed income.
Your people, your people, right, your elderly people can't absorb that kind, I mean.
That's my concern too.
And the problem is, like Dan said, that, that when you take it off the, when you take it out of the market and you put it forever wild on shoreland, a wealthy person who comes in and wants to make this a beautiful house there and put into the tax rolls, can't find a piece of land to buy. There's no land to buy, because the people that they're approaching now are people that really need the money, I mean, there are many people that are being approached to sell their land to the land trusts right now, and unfortunately, that leaves no land for anybody to come in and be part of our base later. And, you know, I see why they wanna do it, but I also think somehow, that's a great idea, like less taxes, but then the new people that come in have to pay the, the difference, because we still have to run the town, so who's gonna come and pay more taxes than your neighbor who lived here twenty years?
I'll tell you, well, I'll tell you right now, from neighbors that are here for twenty years, you go anywhere else in this country, this is a steal. You may not think so, living here, living here for fifty years, what your tax base is right now, but just about anywhere else in the country, it's a steal.
We have other places that can absorb this impact, you don't have industries.
Yeah.
We also, we also have like twenty-six thousand dollar median income, is that, is that what it is?
Not according to Google.
It's thirty-six thousand.
It's not, it's not, no way, no.
I, I doubt it's twenty-seven. Yes.
Not thirty, I'm trying.
Yes, you gotta look at all the.
I'm dying, but I'm trying.
I see it all the time, there is.
People having to leave, that's what you're saying.
Having to leave, and I just see people struggling to pay for their homes and their taxes.
So, to answer the question about what they can do for studying, I would really like that they get, that they get the grassroots feedback from the actual people who it impacts, because, and hopefully that you get some of them to talk, to talk to them. Because I think that, that goes a long way, that went a long way when Joanne and I showed the state card, but we showed what happened to the fishermen, and that really worked. They really need to know, Augusta needs to know what.
And I'd like to know if there is some sort of proportional.
They get, um, removed from us, because they don't come out here.
Is, and, and maybe it is, and if it is, treat it the same it shouldn't be, in that if, if an organization puts something into tree growth in a, relax, better, wealthier neighborhood as opposed to, as opposed to here, and, and the fact that I would argue that we have the wealthiest land. So, we're, so, oh, I agree with you.
Yeah.
So, there, there's gotta be, there's gotta be a, 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 a.
I might be able to get a ticket for anybody, does anybody else wanna go to this meeting?
Where is that?
Winter's Harbor.
On the, on the second.
We're watching it on Friday, Renee, you're gonna have to send us.
I'm going, and I know Rhonda Welcom's going, not for the meeting, and Melissa Lee is going.
Well, that's good.
We're all gonna meet up.
And you're gonna have some nice feedback when you come back.
The last question, I think we've covered, but land, land conservation in Maine has been a controversial subject, topic in recent years, especially in the Down East and Acadia regions. Can the economic study help to alleviate the conflict, if so, how? I think it's much covered it.
We've answered that.
Yeah. Okay.
It's an ad hoc. Hi, hi, ad hoc.
Okay. Can you give me a list of, of, I saw you looking at it, that make up this dummy, this dummy?
Well, what I, what I looked at was.
I'll give you a copy of that.
All right.
That's fine, thank the study. That's fine.
What, what, what the lists really are, this, well, this is the bibliography, and this is where they got all their research, but there's really all, what's on here is the list of all the conservation, all the land trusts.
And that's what I'm saying, this is made up, this is of all the land trusts.
So, I have the representation. And we, we should, we should, we should get a copy. That's what I'm thinking, that's what I think.
This is a copy of the agenda. If anybody can have, I have it on. That's the agenda.
So I think there's some of these blank pages.
That's fifty-eight pages.
Oh, yes.
You can do with that two-page, and then some that are just blank. Yeah, I think we wanna look at that. Okay, good news. Look at this. Town office closed on Monday, November twelfth.
Yay, right?
In observation of.
Veterans Day. That's nice, wrong again.
I'm in one.
I was going on our time clock.
I looked into that.
Yeah, what's going on with the time clock? You doing the time clock? We have committee updates.
Simple, yeah.
Committee updates, Jason, Harbor Board third, Monday of the month.
I don't have any, I missed the last.
Revolving November thirteenth.
Is it?
Four o'clock, so.
So it's November, what's the third Monday?
Three, three o'clock, daylight savings time, I forgot.
I don't know what eleven one is. We have ten here. What's the third Monday in November? Oh, so that's the one.
No, I don't think I'd be welcome to this.
Eleven, eleven, eleven nineteen is the.
What if, what if they promise you a fire shop?
Show business on eleven Friday.
For a bus.
Yes, for a bus.
Next show business on whatever day. Joanne, Washington County emergency.
Um, yeah, January, December tenth at five at Friendly Restaurant.
That's an emergency.
Revolving long end.
Huh? All right, we're Wade Hessa.
Hessa?
Yeah, we can. She has notes.
Recycling, November ninth at four, economic development to be announced. State Barbers, November twenty-ninth at five. Planning Board is November twentieth. I don't know when. Public comment?
Wanda, just to let you know, honey.
You've been appointed.
Everything we've got. Um, we just had one question about Stephanie, and we're gonna call MMA on that.
And get a ruling. She's been appointed, provided she's a school board member, is allowed to serve in this.
Yeah, but she, she researched that, I think.
She did herself, so she must know.
She probably knows, you know, Stephanie.
And then we went from five to seven. We opted two, two numbers.
Because we wanted to put that out to the public, said if there's any other.
Other people might wanna be involved.
A seven with an, with an alternate, which means your quorum, your quorum would be four, which isn't too bad. You know, you probably always have four.
And Barbara, I know she said it.
We did point Barbara as alternate. So you're, you're, you're looking at five with Stephanie and an alternate Barbara and then two others. So you're gonna have to get together with the other members and see if you can come up with a time.
I thought we were gonna do nine, but we left one for all of us.
And I appreciate the support of the board.
Well, good luck, hopefully. Now, and the one thing I asked Sonya to find out is when would be the, when would you have to notify the ALS if you were in fact going to?
It's in this frame.
So you wanna know when that date is, so you can report back to the town?
Yeah.
And another thing I wanted to know is, what's the, what, is it the town, is it the town that's reached, the town, like at a town meeting, it would be the town that was decided? Not the whole, or the whole town? So we, we would have to have a special town meeting if in fact you come up with a.
Just, you know, quickly.
And a public hearing.
Uh, one thing, and I'll just be real quick, I know you guys are gonna go, but Wanda Bill Winslow in another town just did this, they broke away. And they felt, and like our school has nine, eight other schools. And they felt that, quote, the government, governance, governance was, you know, it was spread too thin. And I think that, and I was this too, he, you know, they've all got nine other, eight other schools to deal with. And their main objective was local control for that.
So you're gonna try to do all that research and get back to us? And, and so just be, just be aware of the fact that if we, when the cutoff date is to succeed from the ALS, when that is, and then you're gonna have to count back three or four weeks because you're gonna have to give a public hearing before the town, special town meeting, because that's required before a vote on the special town meeting. So you're gonna need four weeks prior to the cutoff date if you're thinking about this following school year.
Yep, yeah.
Just to say.
Thanks for that, Carolyn.
It's something to do with the winter.
Yeah, she's done a lot of research already and she's, you know, she's stayed in the same thing. Yeah.
I think the two main things are cost effectiveness and local control. Yes.
And benefits for the children.
If you guys can have that, you know, and, and, right, and whatever's gonna benefit our kids. I mean, and that's.
And the state, you know, also has a penalty, you know, there's no penalty for, you know, often, I believe.
Apparently, no penalty is paid.
Well, I, you know, I think the state. The state came up with this bright idea years ago. And I think the state just dropped the bomb.
They did, Joanne. It's just like transportation directors, that's one of our problems right now. We don't even have one.
I know. We don't have the bus to take.
No.
And it was all done in the house years ago.
Yeah.
And before we go, I wanna congratulate our Lubeck soccer team.
Oh, yes.
Right.
And I think we had one student, wonder who that might be, who was from Lubeck, who was on the recent Washington Academy state champion volleyball.
Yes, we did. Yeah, Hayden Bell.
So Hayden was the big track man, right?
Yes, yes, yeah. He was.
I believe football.
Well, one family's got, I think, three winners in soccer.
Oh, yeah, Colton is in soccer.
And Colton soccer.
Colton is in football.
Yeah.
Jamie was volleyball.
Yeah, so I have a switch back there.
But when you stop and think about it, we have like, I think, sixty-eight kids down here. And for our school to, you know, be the champions, I mean, that's same, it is.
It's not just soccer, it's everything.
Yeah.
Basketball, peewees, you know, they do it.
Yeah, everybody was amazed at how many cars and. I was worried about the kids falling out the windows.
Yeah, I hear the rockets on, it was by my house. So go Green, you know, the fire, five minutes away.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they like, they like that.
Go Green, go Hornets, thank you to the coaches.